Three people on right now. Dwayne, do you wanna kick us off and get us started?
First thing, thanks Tiffany. Well, uh, good evening, everyone. As some of you may know, I am the IABA current president. And welcome to today's town hall meeting. We have a full agenda for today's call, but mainly there are three things that we're hoping to discuss. One is our staff introductions. So as you may or may not know, last year, we did hire a new ED. In addition to that, we have hired additional staff this year. So we just wanna make sure that everyone is familiar with our, the IABA staff going forward. And make sure that everyone's reaching out to them as it relates to their volunteer roles and responsibilities going forward. In addition to that, our organization continues to grow and continues to evolve. As such, over the past six months, we've taken a step back in terms of really analyzing our org structure, making sure that we're more efficient going forward and more equipped to handle our responsibilities as an organization as they continue to change and evolve going forward. So as part of that discussion, first and foremost, we're gonna first introduce our new committee structure. Second, we're gonna introduce our new committee leaders. And then provide a brief overview of our, provide a brief overview of our different committees under the new committee structure. And then we'll also open up the floor for Q and A as part of that discussion, as I'm sure most of you on this call will probably have some clarifying questions that we'll do our best to answer as part of today's conversation. And then lastly, we'll conclude with a few quick updates and reminders, just as we look forward to the next upcoming months as per the organization's working calendar going forward. So that being said, first and foremost, I do, for those who, for those of you who are not familiar, want to introduce you to Tiffany Holmes, who is our new ED, which we hired in the fourth quarter of 2022. Tiffany, do you wanna give a brief introduction and introduce yourself to the organization?
Sure, sure. I saw a lot of names that I've been seeing and email communications and you know, on, on the website. So welcome, everyone. I see a lot of student names and volunteers. I'm so happy to see you all and I'm happy to be here. I am Dr. Tiffany Holmes. I am the new-ish executive director. I've been here for about six months now. I'm really excited to work with you all. I hope to see you all in August at the annual meeting, or as many of you as possible, but hope to, you know, get a chance to interact with you as we, you know, get our volunteers and our committees up and running again post-COVID.
Thanks Tiffany. Next, we have Sharifa, who is our deputy executive director. Sharifa, do you wanna introduce yourself to the organization?
Absolutely. Hello, everyone. I'm Sharifa Edwards, the deputy executive director here. Very much new, I would still say. Really started end of February, top of March. Excited to be here. I'll be largely heading up a lot of the pledge work and then the committees that we talk about later on this evening. So I'm excited to meet you all and engage with you all as our time continues forward.
Thanks Sharifa. And then lastly, we have Morgan Colvin, who is our student programs coordinator. Morgan's with, been with the organization for almost three years now, is it Morgan? Two. Okay, I'm getting ahead of myself. Well, um, why don't you just reintroduce yourself to the group before we proceed throughout the rest of the agenda?
For sure. Thanks, Dwayne. Yes, I was gonna say, my face may not be that new, or name may not be that new, as you've seen. But yes, I've been working with IABA for almost two years now and it's been great working with student programs, working with the volunteers and the students. And I oversee, you know, exam prep, bootcamp, mentoring, scholarship, and the actuarial ambassador program. So it's just been a great time working here at IABA and getting to know Tiffany and Sharifa as they have been new additions to the team.
Thanks, Morgan. Okay. So to continue the discussion around our new organizational structure, I'm gonna turn it over to our vice president, Stephen Abokwa, to introduce the topic. Stephen?
I actually did not see Stephen on.
Interesting, okay. Um, not a problem. If Steve is not, not, not online, I, I don't mind. I can go ahead and provide a quick overview, just summarizing what we have presented here on the slides. So I, I guess the, the question is why, again, a new organizational structure? And I, and I think, just to kick things off, and I, I kind of alluded to earlier in the conversation as I introduced the agenda for today's call, is that our organization is, is expanding and evolving. The way we were structured before, I, I think as we continue to grow, I, I think it became more and more evident that there needs to be more oversight over various tasks and responsibilities as an organization, just to make sure, from a governance perspective, we're, we're making sure that we are aligned as an organization and nothing falls between the cracks. As such, we developed over a new org structure to provide greater clarity over roles and responsibilities. Not, not only as it relates to the committees, but how, how that relates to the leaders and staff and highlight how they all tie to our strategic plan. So that's really the purpose of why we want to take a step back and us going through a lot of organizational structures changes over the past year, we thought it'd be a good idea to think through how that relates to our overall organization and committees. As we talk about leadership and with that release, and how that relates to the organizational structure, I just wanna point out a few things. So what we're gonna do going forward is make sure that for each committee, there is one, one non-board member who leads that committee. I, I think that's gonna be the, this case for most committees, with the exception probably of the finance committee, which is gonna be led by the treasurer. And then I, I think also the corporate advisory council committee, which is gonna be led by the president. But I think for all other committees, that's gonna hold true. Next, in turn, in terms of the board members themselves, we're gonna make sure that a board member is aligned to each of the different committees. And again, just to make sure that there's some top-level oversight and, and better understanding of what's going on within the individual committees as we think about the board and how, how that relates to what's going on across the various committees. In addition to that, we're gonna make sure that there's staff oversight and involvement and execution. I would say a combination of those three things as it relates to each committee. So there's not gonna be a committee where there's no staff involvement. So again, just making sure that we have the, the an appropriate amount of oversight and roles and responsibilities spread between not only our committee volunteers, but also our board, and then also our staff. And then here's just a little bit more detail about the summary of the board members' roles on the various committees. Again, we're gonna have a board member aligned to each of the different committees. Each board member is expected to provide some level of oversight. They're also gonna be expected to participate in committee meetings. But that's gonna be on an as-needed basis as determined by the individual committees and what's really required in terms of input and oversight from that respective board member as it relates to that specific committee. Next, as, as various issues and, and, and things and and items that need to be discussed arise as part of those committees and I might need some additional input feedback or, or, or approval, it's gonna be the responsibility of the board member to, to report back to the board directors as it relates to that committee and what's needed as it relates to the overall board in terms of, of helping out with that specific item or, or or item that's going on within that respective committee. And then lastly, as I pointed out, again, there will be a few instances where board members are actually gonna lead a few of these different committees. And that's gonna be the corporate advisory council committee and next the, the financial committee. With that being
Go ahead.
Sorry. Yeah, with that being said, I'm gonna turn it over to Tiffany to, to kind of go over this new org structure that we've introduced and, and what these boxes mean and represent as we think about the new committee structure. Tiffany?
Yeah, thank you, Dwayne. So what you see here is sort of a, a consolidation of what existed before. All of these work streams existed as committees separately. And then what was previously was that there was a friends of the board that would oversee the committee and the friends of the board would report back to the board members and to the former executive director. So what we've done here is we've consolidated and the friends of the board is no longer. However, what you see are eight big committees. And under each committee is their work responsibilities or what they're responsible for. And if you see a gray box, that is a subcommittee. So I think the best way that I've been able to explain it and get people to internalize this new structure is that the blue boxes used to be the friends of the board. Now, the blue boxes are the committee leaders. And so each committee currently has around two co-chairs. And then there's a board member, as Dwayne stated, and a IABA staff member. So for instance, student, student programs committee is Tanisha McGruder. She is a board member. Morgan is a staff member. And then we have two co-chairs. And so we'll introduce those folks later. And then what you see underneath their responsibilities is that they provide oversight and leadership for the scholarship committee, subcommittee, the exam prep subcommittee, the bootcamp subcommittee, the mentoring subcommittee, the ambassador program, and the virtual career fair. Right? Again, if it's not shaded gray, it's just a part of what they do. So another example of that is if you look at the annual meeting committee, the leaders are Nicole Harrington and Joyce Lynn. And I am also a part of that committee. There's no subcommittee, but what we're all responsible for is site selection, session selection, and event planning. So I hope that makes sense. But the point here is to provide a continuous loop of communication amongst all stakeholders in IABA, including staff, volunteers, and board members. And, you know, working together so that no group feels inundated with all of the responsibility. And so we've gone from having just one executive director to three staff members. And so we're hoping that with that, in this new structure, that this will provide more hands-on deck, so to speak. And I'm going to go to the next slide.
Hey Tiffany, not, not to cut you off, well, I, I think Stephen's now online. So Stephen, I'm not sure when you joined in, but I, I'm not sure if you wanna add any additional context to the new committee structure that we've that we've started to discuss and introduce?
No, absolutely. And apologies, I think I had technical difficulties in joining. I thought, I thought you covered all the, the main point there. The only thing that I'll add is again, the point that you had noted, which is to bring greater clarity. If you look at the structure that we had previously, we didn't have that, like, kind of clear, you know, line of sight between the various leaders, our, our members, the staff, as well as the board. We did roll in the, the old friends of the board structure into this particular structure. And, and, and to bring a more stronger alignment to our strategic plan ultimately, you know, to, to bring the leadership closer to our members and all of our volunteers. It is kind of the vision here. So it's one that I hope everyone is excited about and hopefully more people want to kind of join and participate.
Thanks, Stephen.
So I, I can hop in here. So the, the role of the committee leaders, I think people were asking for more clarity around this, but committee members are basically the drivers of the vision of the committees, right? And so they're going to lead the committees, oh, the co-chairs, I'm sorry. They're going to lead the committees and they're gonna lead the strategy. And of course, again, with board members and, and staff members and volunteers all being a part of the ideating and planning and strategy creation, the co-chairs are the ones that will kind of oversee that. And right now, we have two co-chairs per committee and I think three for one committee. And that committee is, is quite large. I think, you know, we're starting with a framework here. But we will get clearer on exactly what, who is doing what and how things should be executed as we grow and continue to kind of sit in this new structure. And so what we'll do right now is we're going to just kind of go through those eight committees. And we're gonna introduce to you the, the co-chairs, the board members, and the IABA staff member, who will all be a part of working on those committees. And again, these are the committee leaders. You are all here, and there's fifty-three of you here, so I'm super excited to have so many people in attendance. But the ask here is that you join one of these committees. You know, if there are ten people, fifteen people on each committee, then, you know, we'll be able to execute expertly, you know, and it won't, it won't be daunting, a daunting task for anyone. So we're gonna start with Morgan and her marketing and communications committee. She will introduce the folks and hopefully everyone is here that can come off camera and kind of wave, and then we'll, we'll go through the purpose and the staff role and committee leader or committee roles.
Perfect. Thank you so much, Tiffany. So I want to go ahead and introduce my committee of folks. We do have Gloria Gilliam, ACAS, MAA. And she is also a board member. She is unable to join today's call. But we are so happy to work with her and we had a meeting and a lot of ideas. So I'm really excited to work with Gloria. We also have Nakia Smith, ASA, FSA, and she is going to be our co-chair. Nakia, would you, yep, she's waving. Hey Nakia. Thank you so much for coming, for being on today's call. So that will be one of our co-chairs. And then we also have Coin. I, I didn't see Coin hop on. But we do have him as well as one of our co-chairs. And then you have me. I will be the staff member over the marketing and communications committee. All right, so this slide covers a lot of what the purpose is of the committee, the role, and what I'll be doing as well as a staff member. So the purpose of the, you know, of our committee will be responsible, but not limited to social media, traditionally, traditional media and outreach, right? And we'll also be covering a number of branding initiatives as well. But this committee, we're aiming to have three to four committee members. We currently have our two co-chairs and our board members. So we'll be aiming for three to four committee members for this marketing and communications committee. The committee responsibilities do include annual marketing communications planning and also identifying opportunities and ideas on various branding and marketing initiatives. So IBA, of course, we're trying to continue to brand ourselves, continue to grow. And this committee will be able to focus on the marketing and branding side of that growth. And lastly, my staff role, I will continue to manage the social media accounts. If you see all the posts and, and all the graphics and everything, I create those and also develop the content for it, like the posts and stuff. And I'll still continue to draft all press releases and posts and oversee outreach and implement, you know, a number of branding initiatives as a staff member. So ultimately, we'll all be working together to really push that initiative and a strategic plan that IBA, you know, has developed. Okay. All right, so another one of my committees that I'll be overseeing, which I'm super, super excited about as well, we have our board member, Tanisha McGruder. She is an FSA, MAA, board member. And Tanisha, could you come off camera and give us a wave? Cause I think I saw her hop on. She's, she's in the car. She's in the car. We see her though. You're muted, but we got you.
I said I'm not driving, I'm just in the car.
Okay, good. Please. No, I'll be on the phone and driving, please. But that's good. So that, that will be our board member for this committee. So thank you for jumping on today as well, so everybody can see your lovely face. And then we also have the Lisa Beatty, ACAS, and she will be one of our co-chairs. Can you give us a wave? Yes, she's right there. All right, and then we also have James King, ACAS, and he will be our other co-chair. He, yep, right there. I hope you all can see the co-chairs. But they'll both be leading our student programs initiatives. And then once again, I'm the staff member. Alrighty, so to provide some clarity on what we'll be doing, the committee will be responsible for the vision and planning of all IBA student programs, which do include the programs that I oversee currently, which is scholarship, exam prep, bootcamp, mentoring, and our actuarial ambassador program. So this committee will oversee those programs. We currently do have our co-chairs as well. And as Tiffany mentioned in the org structure, the gray boxes mean, excuse me, subcommittee. And with the subcommittee, the co-chairs will basically oversee that. And for the subcommittees, we are looking for two to eight members for that. Okay, so you have opportunity to either work in scholarship, bootcamp, exam prep, any one of the, you know, programs that we offer. To dive into the committee role, the committee will create annual plans and will oversee subcommittee planning, including but not limited to scholarships, election process, exam prep calendar, and picking participants such as, you know, the actual students, the student facilitators, the mentors, everybody that, you know, we need to really push the program and get it going. The committee will be able to help us select those individuals, including our bootcamp sessions, logistics, and, and more. So you'll have a lot of opportunity to dive into all of the student programs that we offer. And lastly, I will be responsible for managing the student programs process, procedures, and logistics, as I've been doing in this role. And I will also, of course, still remain the point of contact for all IBA student programming and share its information with people that may be interested or prospective students. So that's just the, an overview of what we, what we'll be doing in my committees that I'll be overseeing.
Thanks, Morgan.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, and so now I am up with the annual meeting committee. And so, you know, we've already kicked it in high gear because the annual meeting is a few, couple of months away. But Nicole Harrington, ACAS, MAA. She's a chair and a board member. She's been planning this annual meeting for five years. And so we wanna relieve her and, and, you know, get a lot of people on this committee so that, you know, we can just kind of spread the love and the joy. But Nicole, can you just wave a little bit? Or say hey, cause I can't see anyone right now?
Hi, everyone.
Okay, yeah. And then Joyce Lynn, she's our co-chair. She's a senior consultant in actuarial and analytics at Travelers. Joyce Lynn, are you on? I didn't see her.
I don't think she is. I think she's traveling this week for work.
Awesome. Joyce Lynn has been on, on and, and, and meeting with Nicole very regularly and getting onboarded. So that's been really awesome to see. And then I am the IABA staff member that is helping out. And so, as you all know, the purpose of the annual meeting is to execute a wonderful learning and network experience for our thousands of IABA staff members and our sponsors and external partners. And so, you know, the meeting has been growing exponentially year after year, particularly after COVID. And we're really excited to be in Chicago in August. But we are, it says that we're looking for three members. We are looking for folks to join and, and help out. So if you're interested, when the survey comes out, please join. But really quickly, you can look at this and kind of internalize what the committee roles are and the staff roles. But like I said, you know, this is a framework. This is a, a, a starting point. And so as we sit in this new space, we'll start to tweak things as they go. And so this is what we aspire to right now. It hasn't been that way, just because, you know, Nicole has done it for so long. I'm new. Joyce Lynn is new. And so, you know, the, the roles and responsibilities have not been as split as you see here. The next committee, and I think Dwayne has said this multiple times, is the corporate advisory council committee. And right now, we have two board members who are chairs, along with myself. So Dwayne husband, husband's FSA, CFA, co-chair and board member. He is the senior manager at Ernestine Young. And then Ms. Monique Hacker, she's FSA, MAA. She's also co-chair and board member. She's the vice president at Actuary at New York Life. And of course, we And so for all of you who may not be aware of the corporate advisory council, that is our highest level of sponsorship and engagement with external partners. And the purpose of this committee is to lead the initiatives that involve those members. And so due to the high profile and importance of this committee, the chair of this committee will always be the board president. And so, you know, here's shortlist of some of the things that we are responsible for. But we have quarterly CAC meetings. We just had one about a week ago. And then the next one will be right before the annual meeting. There's one in November and then one in February. So the committee role is to plan those agendas and make sure that we are ready to go. And of course, as a staff member, I am the one that is executing on developing and getting the materials together and, and getting us all set and ready to go to have a productive CAC meeting. And then last but not least, we have our finance committee. And so, Eton Edwards, well, he has a lot of letters behind his name. He's ASA, EA, FCA, CAIA. He is our treasurer and board member. He's an actuary and investment officer for the Federal Reserve System. And then Nicole Harrington, again, ACAS, MAA. A, I think, board, and she's a board member, senior actuarial manager at Progressive. And then Amma, who I did not see here, she's a PhD candidate, FSA, CFA, and she's our student liaison. And she's a graduate assistant at Ma'amad at Rutgers University. And so this is the finance committee as it sits right now. And of course, the purpose of the committee is to develop and oversee our budget that continues to grow. I think another important role that we are really zooming in on is not only just creating and managing our budget, but also but also creating, um, an investment plan. And so, you know, because our, um, IBA, um, actual staff is, is a small staff. There's only three of us. There's no person who kind of handles the day-to-day finances. Um, and so the treasurer, who is the board, a board member, um, provides a lot of that oversight. And then I'm going to hand it off to, um, Lucy Rifa, who will take it from here.
Great. Um, I will be supporting the affiliate committee, um, which has, has Stephen Abroqua, um, who's a PhD, FSA, CERA, MAA. He's a board member, um, and current SVP and key account manager at Swiss. Um, along with Gloria Assari, um, who's a FCAS, ACIA, MAA, who's, um, a co-chair on the committee along with Brandon. I'm sorry, she's the head of pricing at AXA XL. Um, she's going to be co-chairing the committee along with Brandon Roseman, who's a coach, who we said is the co-chair of the committee. He's an actuarial analyst, um, at the Hartford. Um, if those three, if you guys, all three will do them at the same time. If you can come offline and give us all a wave, so we can see who the leaders of the affiliate committee are. I see Stephen on, uh, Gloria isn't, is not with us currently. I believe she's just recently had a baby, so we're sending her congratulations. Um, Brandon is, I don't think Brandon's on the call either. Do we see Brandon? Um, and then I'll be the staff member on that committee. The idea here with the affiliate committee, many of you are familiar with affiliates in your respective cities and regions. Um, so the affiliate committee really is focused on leading local groups and increasing awareness and engagement, networking opportunities in key cities, um, where there is a large IBA presence. We currently have 10, and those are open to grow whenever the need arises. This committee will be overseeing and supporting, um, those affiliate efforts that are happening. So each affiliate group in each respective of the 10 active cities that we have affiliates, those are considered subgroups in the committee and they all have their own individual leader as well. Um, and then are overseen, as we said, with the co-chairs, the board member and the staff member and supporting those initiatives. You'll see there what the committee roles and the staff roles look like. Um, again, all aligned around supporting the, uh, the efforts to really engage members, um, at the local level and increase awareness, bring in new members, support new members, students and the like in each of those respective cities. So if you're interested in doing some of that work, some more on-the-ground work, engaging with, uh, members and soon-to-be members in your local areas, the affiliate committee is definitely for you. Can I move this far? It's great. Um, the second committee that I'll be working alongside is the Impact and Membership Committee. This one is a new one and a huge one and a very exciting one. Um, so much so that we have two board members that are supporting and leading this effort. We have Mambo Mujala, FSA, MAA. Um, she's the corporate vice president at New York Life currently alongside Alan Newsom. He's the FSA, MAA, and our board member, currently the head of actuarial and investments at Mass Mutual. Mambo and Alan, if you're on the line, can you give us a wave so folks can, who don't already know you, as our mighty board members can recognize you. There you are. Alan just popped on.
Uh, just real quick on this. On it, so not all of that on it.
All of what?
Head of actual investments on it.
Oh.
Yeah.
There you go.
See everyone.
Clarification, fair. Um, we have, we have three different co-chairs for this committee. Again, the work is, you'll see in a moment when we go through what is happening on the Impact and Membership Committee. So we've got three co-chairs, uh, heading up this effort. We've got Anthony Witherspoon, ASA, MAA, A, um, who is currently the, a health actuary at Price Waterhouse Cooper. Um, we've got Nana Coleman, ASA, who's co-chairing, who's VP of Product Development and Revenue Operations at Fleary. And then we've got John Applewhite, who's an FSA and the head of insurance and product strategy at Amplify. Those of you, those of you three who are on the line, can you give us a wave so folks can know who's who? And who's going to be co-chairing this? I know I saw Nana on here earlier. Not sure if John or Anthony was able to make it. Nana, we see you in the shadows, but you're mighty even in the shadows. Um, and I'll be a staff member alongside on the Impact and Membership Committee. Can we, there we go. So what's exciting about this committee is that it's, it's new in a lot of ways. Um, the functions are not necessarily new, but putting it all together in a way that's impactful and organized and aligned is something that's new. And you will see that it's pretty expansive. So there's lots of opportunities to jump in and share your thought and your skill and your expertise here. The idea is that this committee is really going to be responsible for the, the broad bucket of an engaged membership force, right? Everything from thought leadership management, data collecting and reporting, really thinking about impact. Are we having the type of impact we want? Are we collecting the type of data that we would, would need to show that? What else, what other research is happening in the field that we would want to share out from IBA, um, to enter into the space? Thinking about what are we, how are we supporting our more seasoned actuaries and keeping them engaged? How are we keeping general membership engaged beyond the annual meeting? Um, what are the things that our members really want to do to stay engaged, um, or become engaged? Uh, Futures Leaders Program, thinking about how are we supporting the development, um, of mid-level leaders to move up and through, uh, the profession? And so there's lots of space here. Um, of course, we say, you know, looking for five members alongside the three committee leaders, but there's definitely, definitely space and opportunity. So if you're interested in really lending your thought and your expertise to how we will remain, help other members become engaged, remain engaged. What are the cutting-edge things you want to be IBA to be a part of and, and driving our members towards? This is definitely the committee for you. Um, and you'll see there in the committee roles and the staff roles, um, it really speaks to a number of those pieces as well. Right? And then lastly, the Technology Committee, um. This committee here, it's led by one staff member, or sorry, one board member, Monique Hacker. I believe you've heard her name earlier on the, on the previous committee, yeah, Tiffany, I think.
Yeah, and I'd like to shout her out and let her call, come off camera, so I hope she's here.
Oh, well, I'll give her a, so it's like double the duty all in one. We save the best for last. So Monique, um, Monique is an FSA and a MAA. She's a current, um, co-chair, board member, uh, the vice president and actuary at New York Life. Monique, if you're on the line, can you come off? We've been talking about you and waiting to see your face.
Yeah, that's gonna keep happening. You're gonna wait for a while.
You've been waiting, but we saved it and we waited for you. So those of you who don't know, Monique, you will soon.
Yeah, but you won't see your face tonight. Hi, guys.
We understand, but thank you, Monique. And, and, and sitting on two committees, actually, and lending your leadership in that way. Um, the Technology Committee has two co-chairs, uh, that will be leading it. Justin, don't be mad with me, but it's Justin Tiendre Biogo. Um, as a co-chair, he's currently a vice president at Morgan Stanley. And then we've got PK Mensah, who just I saw join the call, just jumped on, um, who's an actuarial analyst at Progressive. Justin and PK, can you lend your, your faces or your voices and say hello to folks? There we go. Hey, PK, I see you. Not sure if Justin made it on.
Yeah, Justin, Justin isn't on. Actually, I, I was on a different computer, but because of video, I had to hop on another one. Sorry about that.
That's okay. You can be his representative. There's PK and there's another one alongside, um, PK, equally as talented, and Justin. I'll be the staff member that's going to be supporting the Technology Committee. Um, this committee is really wonderful, um, thinking about really bringing innovation, um, and excellence in the technology space to all IBA does, right? So really focusing on what are the techniques that IBA has, um, and taking a proactive role to solving the technology issues, um, that are facing the organization. We also, we all know that technology is ever-changing, the demands, the needs, the capabilities, et cetera. Um, hashtag chat GPT, right? Like changes by the day and thinking about the innovative ways that we can get ahead of things and keep IBA, um, on the, on the cutting edge of what, of making sure that we are efficient and effective and driving our mission. And so that's the main purpose of the organization. A huge component here is developing, um, and enhancing the IBA website, thinking about all of the technology around the annual meeting. For those of you that have went the, at the annual meeting website, the app, all of these other components and ever-growing. Um, we have the co-chairs. Looking for here, it says one to two members. To be fair, open all the way up to 10. Um, especially if you already have expertise or interest in particular, um, technology areas. That would be highly, highly welcomed. So definitely sign up when that comes, comes along. And there we have it.
Thanks, Sharifa.
Yeah.
Tiffany, do you want to cover the next steps as it relates to the org structure?
I do, but before I do that, I just wanted to, uh, give, um, the committee leaders, um, an opportunity to come off camera, um, for annual meeting. Joyce Lynn and Nicole. If you are here, wave hello. I know Nicole was. I di- I didn't see Joyce Lynn. And then Edson, if you are here, I, I did not see Edson either. Who's a treasurer and head of the Finance Committee. Awesome. All right. Um, so our next steps are, uh, quick and easy, right? We are here to, this evening, um, to roll out this new, um, organizational structure that we're really excited about, um, but also to re-engage folks. Um, I, I know that, you know, people were super involved, um, pre-COVID. Um, and then everything changed during COVID, right? And then last year, we were back in person, um, and not everybody actually came back. So what we are here to do is to ask folks to actually join a committee. Um, and so after, uh, this call, Morgan is going to send out to, um, all of the IBA community, um, a, a link to a survey, um, in which you will have an opportunity to choose a committee. Um, and then, once you choose a committee, the committee leaders, uh, that we just spent, um, the last hour introducing, along with board members and staff members, will, um, kind of, uh, reconvene, um, and invite whoever signs up for the committee to, um, to meet. And then our hope is that you'll all meet us down in, um, Chicago or up in Chicago, I should say. Um, and we'll have an opportunity, thank you Nicole and Joyce Lynn, um, who's given us some time, um, to actually break out into, um, groups and have an in-person committee meeting at the 2023, um, annual meeting in Chicago.
Uh, before we, we, we move on to Q and A, can I, can I make a quick comment, uh, uh, to your voice here? Uh, I, I, I will, uh, you know, encourage all of our membership to, uh, consider joining one of the committees, uh, for, 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 for a couple of reasons. Uh, one, I think it's, it's a good way to, uh, be plugged in all across the year, uh, and not just in the annual meetings. Uh, this is going to be the avenue that, you know, that the next crop or the next generation of IBA leaders, uh, you know, what, what, what can it, can it come from? But, but also, if you think about it, you will have the opportunity to build real leadership skills that you can leverage in our, in the corporate world. So just wanted to put on a list of projects and, and actually, uh, as a first year.
Thanks, Stephen. Yeah, and I, and I think, I know I stressed a lot i- in my opening and my, and a lot about the org structure and why we did around, um, improving governance and, and providing clarity and roles and responsibilities. But what I think it also does is, is provide additional transparency in terms of what we do. And hopefully that can help initiate and ignite additional, uh, volunteerism as, as that was really drives our organization. And we can't do it without our members. Um, so as Stephen and, and Tiffany stressed, um, definitely if you have time, um, based on, um, your, your responsibilities outside of, of your career, um, definitely, um, please consider volunteering and participating within the organization. We do need your help and we can't do without you.
So now.
So with that being said, um, that's our presentation around the introduction of our committee and org structure for today. Um, I, I know we covered a lot in a short amount of time, um, but we do want to give our members, uh, a few minutes to, ask any questions that they may have as it relates to the org structure. And we'll do our best to answer it on this call. If not, um, we can follow up at a later time. But, um, again, we just want to open up the, the floor, um, to any questions and, 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 uh, our team will do our best to, uh, provide responses.
Hi, uh, my name's Ajay. Can everybody hear me? Yeah, so, um, I, I just have a question on, um, maybe the requirements, uh, because I know some committees might need, like some things more than others, like the Technology Committee might need a certain, um, base level of technical skills. Um, in the survey, will there be like a description of like what skills that you need to have in order to join one? And like, who would be a good fit?
I would say if you are willing to learn, um, and you are willing to, you know, be active, I think whatever suits you and what speaks to you, you should join. Um, and, and I'll let Dwayne and Stephen and, um, and Monique and, and Tanisha and everyone else that's on here that's been around for a long time, um, speak more to requirements for committees. But I, I would say if you're interested in, um, any of the committees, you should sign up.
Um, could I just ask a question if that's okay? If you guys can hear me? Okay, so, um, I'm Linds. I'm just asking like a follow-up question to the question that was just asked. Uh, so Dr. Holmes, since you say it's basically based on interest, my, my interest lies more towards the affiliates. But in my region, because I'm in South Africa, um, there isn't such a, a large, uh, uh, you know, IBA presence here. So how would that work? Would it be something that maybe I would need to kind of spearhead? Or like, should I just maybe hang 10 for a couple of years? Or, or how?
Stephen, I'm gonna let you answer that one.
You gave me the hard one. Can you all hear me? I hear that I was breaking up.
We can hear you fine now.
Okay, thank you. Um, so Linds, I think that's, uh, that's a good question. So the, I think, um, you know, structure definitely is more regional and based on where, 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 where you are based. I know, um, in the past, we've had, uh, as an example, the, the head of our newsletter committee was based in Germany. Um, and I think, I think my answer to that, uh, question will be, maybe, you know, hold off a couple of years to see how, uh, we could, uh, garner more local, uh, representation for, uh, for potentially a group to, uh, to form or an affiliate to form that has like real members. Um, but for now, you know, maybe we'll, we'll encourage you to consider if there are any other of the committees that, that, that you see, uh, as a good fit, as a secondary option in the interim. Uh, but I'll let, I'll let others, um, chime in as well. Mambo, Monique, I don't know if, if anybody else has any, any other thoughts to, to jump.
I can chime in. Um, Stephen, I might contradict with you a little bit. Um, if there's a good enough number of people in her region, they can probably consider, uh, starting an affiliate there. And I think the advice I would give is to talk to someone like Gloria, who recently started an affiliate. So they'll have more, uh, information about like the challenges that they might have or, um, what they should consider before becoming an official affiliate. And every affiliate has like different sizes. So there are some affiliates that are much smaller, like under 10 people and others that are like, you know, 100, uh, hint, hint, New York, New Jersey. So if, if any size can work, I think they should just reach out to Gloria and Brandon, get more information.
And I'll add to that Mambo. Um, I know that Gloria and Brandon have like a starter pack, um, and a process to like, see if like, and a process to like see if like groups in different regions can start something. It's not too much of a lift. So I would say, Lenz, join the committee, talk to Brandon and Gloria and, and see how you can get started. And the answer might be Stephen's initial response, which you have to wait a couple of years, but it won't be, it won't hurt to like join the committee, meet with them and, and see what can be done.
Yeah, I, I would, I would agree with that in that, Lenz, if you join, you might begin learning some of the roots. If, if there's local, you know, numbers, maybe it's a couple of years, maybe it's, you know, next year, for example. But I think joining the committee and learning some of the experience that anybody do will be a good start.
Awesome. Thank you.
Dalisa, put something in the chat. That's virtual affiliate events that promote Lenz's question. Of help, yes. Dalisa, do you want to throw a little more light on that?
Sure. Yeah, I can do that. No, I was, it was just kind of throwing out another point of view, really in the form of a question to see if, if maybe that could help a little bit more. Obviously, I, I don't have much experience or know much about the work that goes on with the affiliate committees. But I was just thinking, since, you know, we live in a world where everything's a bit virtual, does that kind of help with still getting involved and still kind of learning, kind of to Stephen's point at the very end there? That was really it.
Good point.
Dwayne, you're on mute.
Sorry. Do we have any other questions?
I have a question that I, I should know, but I don't remember. Do we offer the annual meetings virtually? Or they just in person for now?
They are just in person. Did offer it virtually that, well, that one year in 2020 due to COVID and in 2021. But prior to that, they were all in person and we plan to proceed with that, having them in person.
Okay, the other question I have for Tiffany, what is the process of committee selection? So we do a survey and then what happens? Can you shed a little bit light there?
Sure. So the, the survey will come out and we're gonna put it in the eBlast. It will be an email to anyone whose email is in our database. It will be on our social media and we'll, we'll keep it open for a couple of weeks, probably around two weeks. And then after that, you will get, there will be some outreach from the committee leaders and the staff members to welcome you. And then there will be a, a meeting schedule. So between now and August, there will be a virtual meeting schedule.
Any other questions?
There, there was a question in the chat from Phalanx. When can students transition to joining committees?
Good question. I, I think that's, that's, that's up to the students. Again, we don't want to over-consume individuals with roles and responsibilities as it relates to their career, their personal lives and, and volunteering. So to the extent that you think that you have time in your schedule to, to be an active volunteer, then I, I would, I would say then you're, you're more than welcome to join any committee which interests you.
Yeah, maybe Dwayne, I can add to that. At the minimum, hopefully all students are taking advantage of their affiliates. They might not formally be on the committee, but, but, you know, participate in the affiliate activities. When I was a student, and I know for many others also, I, I, I know students that have joined various committees where they have interest, think of the networking and opportunities and, and the possibility to take on more once maybe you transition to the workforce as, as your schedule and time permits.
Okay, well, if there aren't any questions, Tiffany, do you just maybe want to quickly wrap up?
One question, super quick.
Sure, go ahead.
Oh, yeah, I don't think this was dealt with. Outside of like the time commitment, how much is, is the in-person commitment for the committees? Like, okay, on side of the annual meeting, what you said is the, the plan for the foreseeable future is to stay in person.
I can answer that. The meetings will primarily be virtual. You know, we're, we're a remote organization. You know, people are all over the globe, actually. And so, you know, we are best suited to meet virtually. But we have scheduled that one time where we can actually get together in person to meet in August. Thank you for that question, though.
Thank you.
And Tiffany, just before you proceed, I, I also did see in the chat that Mambo provided some additional insight and clarity in terms of some virtual events that do happen and, and for individuals to pay attention to the weekly eBlast where those are typically, typically communicated. So thanks again Mambo for that, adding that additional detail to that response. Okay, Tiffany, sorry, you can go ahead now.
Awesome. And we are right on time. We have one minute left. And so we just want to kind of remind everyone, if you've been, if you are a member, a paid member, you've been seeing in the blast and on social media to nominate. Board nominations will be closing May twenty eighth. We also want to remind you and want you to look out for more information to come. Our annual meeting, we're really excited to be in Chicago this year, August thirteenth and fifth. And then, you know, again, Sharifa, myself and Morgan, we will be, you know, the executors of a lot of what's happening. And so if you have any additional questions, please do not hesitate to reach out to us. Our email addresses are here for you. And again, be on the lookout for the survey to come. Please take the survey. We're excited to have you on board and join and volunteer. You know, I'll give it back to you, Dwayne, to close us out.
Thanks, Tiffany. Well, I'll be brief. I know we're at the top of the hour. But again, I want to thank everyone who was able to join today. I look forward to seeing each and every one of you at the annual meeting in person and hope to catch up again then. So again, thanks for joining and we'll see each other at the annual meeting. Take care, everyone. Thank you.
Good night, everyone. Thank you.
Have a good one.